This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Melso for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Councilman Stewart is absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. Bill Swindle will lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty of the day that you've given us. We thank you for the freedom that you've given us to live in this nation where we have the right to worship as we choose, the right to vote as we choose, and the right to live as we choose within the bounds of the law. God be with these men as they make decisions that affect so many people for so long, and Lord, that they will have the wisdom to make the correct decisions. Father, be with those men and women who are serving our nation here and overseas to protect our freedoms that we so dearly hold on to. And Lord, be with all elected officials, both locally and state and nationally, God that they will make the decisions that are proper for our nation and not necessarily for themselves. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting on April 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March of 30th through April of 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Yes. Three. Right. I'd like to ask Martha Butcher to come up, please. Is she here? I have a proclamation here. Whereas once thought to be a rare disease, sarcoidosis is now known to affect people of all ages, races, and genders. Sarcoidosis is an inflammatory disease that can affect almost any organ in the body and causes heightened immunity, a condition that results in overreaction of the immune system resulting in damage to the body's own tissues. The classic feature of sarcoidosis is the formation of granulomas, microscopic clumps of inflammatory cells that group together interfering with organ function. And in the United States, sarcoidosis is most commonly targets the lungs, lymph nodes, but can also affect the skin, eyes, liver, salivary glands, sinuses, kidneys, heart, the muscles and bones, the brain and nervous system. Though the exact cause of sarcoidosis is not known, current research indicates that individuals who are genetically susceptible to sarcoidosis exposures to bacteria, viruses, or chemicals might trigger the disease. While progress has been made in understanding the symptoms and better diagnosing the disease, there is still much to learn about sarcoidosis. But with the increased research, the goal of discovering the cause, improving treatment, and finding a cure are attainable. Therefore, be it resolved that I Sherman-Gant and the Mayor of the City of Gadsden do hereby proclaim the month of April 20th, April 2012, as Sarcoidosis Awareness Month in the City of Gadsden in an effort to raise awareness about the disease. Do you like to say a few?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. This is truly an honor. I was diagnosed with sarcoidosis at the age of 25. I soon will be 65 coming up August, which is a rarity. Most people don't live as long as I've lived with this disease, but God has blessed me. And I truly wish that we could come up with a cure for it because it started out as a black disease, but now it's a people disease. Color has no boundaries. And if we could really get a, you know, come up with a cure for it, we won't lose great people like our comedian Bernie Mac, some of the other actors as they die, you know, they finally say, admit that it was sarcoidosis. It has a lot of different complications, but I truly wish that we could come up with a disease, you know, cure for this disease. And the month of April, we hope to paint the town purple. That is our color. So if you see purple ribbons around, that's in recognition of sarcoidosis. Thank you.
With Steve Garrison and George Tilbury. Are they here?
Yes, we are.
Come up, please. Do you hear us? Whereas the Cusa Valley Sierra Club, the Cusa River Keeper, and the City of Gadsden are sponsoring the Cusa River Earth Day Celebration on April 21st, 2012 at Nakalula Falls Park. This will be the first public Earth Day celebration in the Gadsden area, and the goals are to provide environmental education along with opportunities to enjoy nature. The health of our environment is strongly related to our own health as well as the local economy. The City of Gadsden is located in a beautiful area of the state, and the celebration will seek to increase appreciation of this unique area rich with mountains, lakes, rivers, streams, waterfalls, and forests. The celebration promotes responsibility for one's action as well as civic participation in preserving these rich resources of Gadsden. Therefore, I Sherman-Gant as the Mayor of the City of Gadsden do hereby proclaim, by the virtue of authority vested in me, to hereby proclaim April 21st, Saturday, 2012, Earth Day in Gadsden with the Cusa Valley Earth Day Celebration being held on April 21st, 2012 at Nakalula Falls Park in Gadsden, Alabama.
When we started our Sierra Club group here in Gadsden back in 2008, one of the things that we noticed as time went by is that a very major celebration that has been taking place now for 42 years was not being observed in the Gadsden area, and that is Earth Day. It started in 1970, and there are large-scale Earth Day celebrations all around the country and I believe in other parts of the world. So we decided that we wanted to take it on as the Sierra Club. Sierra Club is the oldest and largest environmental organization in the world, founded in 1892. And we started reaching out for the kind of assistance that we would need to make this Earth Day celebration happen, and I'm very pleased and proud to partner with the City of Gadsden who has made their fine facility at Nakalula Falls available for us to use for this Earth Day celebration. They have been a co-sponsor. Also, the Gadsden Tourism Department, the Etowah County Tourism Department is sponsoring, as is the Cusa River Keeper Organization. But without going into too much more detail on that, the whole thrust of the Earth Day celebration is to bring people together to celebrate our earth, and we have many exhibitors. We have live music being sponsored by one of the local groups, and it's just going to be a good time held between the hours of 10:00 and 4:00 p.m. at Nakalula Falls Park, one of the more beautiful areas in our, you know, county here. And I have brought some flyers. If any of you might have some places at your place of business or places where people would gather where you could post these to assist us and the city in making this event happen, I'll make these available and leave these to be picked up to, you know, to publicize the event. Anything that you can do to help make this event an ongoing success, because we will be doing this again next year and on an ongoing basis, would be greatly appreciated. We've had some other publicity. WGAD ably represented by the leader of our invocation interviewed myself and our leader a week or so ago, and we're hoping to have publicity in the Gadsden Messenger and the Times also ably represented here. So whatever we can do as a community, because this is a community event, to make this thing happen, we will greatly appreciate. Thank you very much.
Before I do this last one, I just want to say, if you notice in the last couple of years, a lot of proclamations we do, but we have so many civic groups and organizations who are volunteering and do things that are positive on our whole area, then I think it's a great thing that we do have all these people who are getting more interested in a lot of different facets of what needs to be done around town and throughout the county. I'm going to ask Becky Henson to come up, please. Becky is our person over Community Development Block Grant Money, CDBG, and I will tell you, she does an outstanding job in her job. When she comes to tell you something, you just listen and then you know it's okay. Go ahead and sign it. I do. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since 1975 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and CDBG funds are used by thousands of neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing neighborhood and human service needs. The Community Development Block Grant Program has had a significant impact on our local economies through job creation and retention, physical redevelopment, and improved local tax bases. Whereas Gadsden, Alabama, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood and human service needs, job creation and retention, and physical redevelopment. Therefore, be it resolved that I Sherman-Gant and the Mayor of the City of Gadsden do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 14th, 2012, as Community Development Week in Gadsden, Alabama, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and the important role it plays in our community. Do you like to say a few?
Thank you. And of course, I'm going to sound like a broken record, as you know. We wanted to get community development block grants out on the forefront again. As you know, that grant has been cut to the City of Gadsden in the past two years. In 2010, we got $1.2 million, and in 2012, we've been cut to $848,000. So we just wanted to get this on the forefront, let people know, and let people contact the folks in Washington who make those decisions, and let them know how important CDBG funds are in the City of Gadsden. So thank you.
Those contacts are Congressman Robert Aderhold and Senators Jeff Sessions and...
Who's the other one with all the...
Shelby.
Yeah, Senator Richard Shelby from Tuscaloosa. But I've heard Senator Shelby say, two years ago, that money wasn't going away, but it doesn't look good, but we need to go online and write them or email them or Twitter, whatever you need to do. Thanks.
Mayor, to the Sierra Club, there's another radio station in town you might want to contact since you want to get the entire community involved, and that's WMGJ 1240. Floyd Dahlem is the station manager. He might put you on there to talk to. We want to get the entire community involved.
All right.
All right. I just said there's a representative there. You might want to give him a flyer, yeah. Okay.
Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Bill Avery doing business is Avery Social Club, has applied for a Class 1 Lounge Retail Liquor License at 921B Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution authorizing an economic development agreement with Rare Hospitality International Incorporated. This grants a rebate of 50% of the sales tax payments up to five years or a maximum of $225,000, whichever comes first. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Yes.
She wants to...
I mean, we don't have any questions. If she wants to speak, that's okay. You want to... I think she answered all our questions.
Good morning. I really don't want to say much, but express some appreciation. Thank you to the City Council, the Mayor, the City Attorney, the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority, that would be Lisa and Brittany. Everybody's been very welcoming and very supportive in helping to bring this project to town, which means a lot of jobs and capital investment for Gadsden. So thank everybody.
You going to give us a projection on that other restaurant?
We would love to bring the other restaurant to town, and we are looking.
Okay. I know we're going to get that question, that's why I asked.
Yeah, you better not mention the name. You won't be able to get out the door.
I know.
Just for a little food for thought there about the other restaurant we're talking about. I was up there two weeks ago on a Saturday, and there was nine people from Gadsden sitting in there where we was. Just a little food for thought. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution appointing member to the Gadsden Etowah County Emergency Management Agency Executive Committee. This approves the appointment of the Chair of the Council's Public Safety Committee, currently Council Member Ben Reed. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution approving rental rates for the Gadsden Museum of Arts. This is for events in the Grand Gallery, and the amount is $425 for up to three hours, which includes setup and cleanup. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fourteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment. This is for Shangri-La to perform on May the 4th as part of the Summer Concert Series. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fourteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment. This is for Grove Groove Edition to perform on August 3rd as part of the Summer Concert Series. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading is an ordinance amending City Code Section 1.7 regarding penalties. This permits the municipal court to charge higher fines for certain state misdemeanors. This ordinance was presented today for the first reading. The council will vote on it next week. New businesses, is there any new business?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I have one item of new business to consider. It's an ordinance authorizing a parking lease agreement with Rare Hospitality International. I make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this essentially is an agreement between Rare Hospitality International and the city relative to a parking lease agreement for 10 years with four or five-year options to renew. So this again takes advantage of some property adjacent to where the development will take place.
Is there any other discussion? You want to say anything?
Well, just as you were going to pave it, landscape it, everything, this one's been completed.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's very important.
For people who couldn't hear, they're going to pave it, landscape it, and do the completion. Irrigation on some property right now is just rocks on it, so it's going to improve our lot.
Surely is, and we appreciate them.
Oh, yes, we do.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider, and this ordinance is amending City Code 10293 as amended by Ordinance 03012 regarding premium rates for retirees. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now it asks for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, there are a lot of discussion, and I think we've got our finance directors here. Lisa, if you will, will you come up and explain this a little bit? I could give a synopsis, but I think you can probably do a better job in letting everybody know what's going on.
Actually, this was an ordinance that was passed last week, and the attorneys in Birmingham that we had to draw up this ordinance asked it be clarified just a little. What this does, right now, currently, our retirees are under our local government health insurance plan, which is what our active employees are on, so retirees and active employees are all under the same insurance plan. But come October the 1st, our retirees will be coming off of our health insurance, and they will be going, they're on Medicare now, but they will be going under a supplement Medicare plan that will be provided by and chosen by the City of Gadsden. That supplement plan at this time has not been named, even though we have chosen a plan, we've not named it at this time. But what this ordinance does, it states that at that time, the retirees, current retirees, will be given a $200 per month supplement amount that they can use or will use towards that supplement plan. What the ordinance really did not state is that that $200 supplement pay will not just be for those that are already Medicare eligible, but it will also be for those retirees that are not Medicare eligible at this time. So for example, when you have a current retiree that becomes Medicare eligible, they will also receive this $200 supplement pay. So this grandfather's in all current retirees, okay? And we wanted to make sure that the language in the ordinance clarified that, so we asked the attorneys to kind of reword it a little to make sure that that was clear. So that's what this ordinance does. Now, this does not include future retirees. This is only current retirees.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
That's what I just said.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Department reports, boards.
Mr. President, I'm Brian Horverson with the Building Department, and I stand here today with actually something good to say about one of our inspectors. I know typically, before this body especially, you don't hear anything positive about the city inspectors, and I understand why. Twenty-one years ago, when I walked into this job, I had a few friends. Since then, they've all, for whatever reason, moved on. And as I stand here today, most of my family won't even talk to me. And those that did live in the city have since moved out. But we do have one of our inspectors that recently received an award, and I want to ask Brent Brewer, if he will, to come up front, and he brought his friend today, his wife, so I'll ask that she come with him. Had the opportunity to attend a conference this past week in Auburn, and I will say that sometimes good things do come from Auburn. This was one of those times. But Brent, there is no higher honor for any of us, no matter what field of work we're in, where our peers select us and recognize us for whatever job we're doing. And so this actually happened just in the past couple of days, but I'll read this to you today. This award is presented to Brent Brewer in recognition of outstanding support and dedication given to the Alabama Association of Plumbing, Gas, and Mechanical Inspectors, and has been duly selected as Code Official of the Year for the State of Alabama, and this was given in Auburn, Alabama, 5th day of April, 2012. And I want to present this today to Brent and say, job well done.
Thank you, Brian. First of all, on state level, I'd like to thank the Plumbing and Gas Fitters Board and the Alabama Board of Heating and Air Contractors, and the Alabama Association of Plumbing, Gas, and Mechanical Inspectors, all the members. And least of all, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the Council.
Most of all.
Most of all. I would like to thank the Mayor and the Council.
That's why he only got his wife as his friend.
Brian, I think you said that right the first time.
That was a Freudian slip.
For the opportunity to be able to work here to receive the award.
Good job.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Kerry Payne, the Director of Parks and Recreation, and I want to just give you an update of what we're having up at Nakalula Falls this weekend. It's time for the Nakalula Barbecue Festival, which we call Smoke on the Falls. This year, we have 45 professional teams entered in the competition and 28 in the Gadsden Regional Backyard Division. One of the professionals that we have this year is kind of something exciting for us and maybe you as well. We have Big Bob Gibson that's entered the professional division. He's out of Decatur. He's not the baseball, Major League Baseball player, but he's a Major League Barbecuer, I would say. He's got the white barbecue sauce, and he's been the Kansas City Barbecue World Champion for two years, so we're excited about him coming to our event. Also, we have two teams out of Ohio that are coming this year, and one from Michigan, and that's the furthest we've ever had anyone coming to enter the competition, so we're excited about that. And just to give you a little bit of information, Weekend Pass for the festival, and we ask and encourage folks to come out and support it, is $15 if you get your Weekend Pass through the end of the day tomorrow. If you don't, if you do not get it tomorrow, then you'll have to pay $10 a day. And just let me give you a little bit of what all that involves. Your pass... Your pass to get in will give you a free barbecue sandwich provided by Dad's Barbecue, a round of mini golf at our mini golf facility at Noculula Falls, as well as entry into the park, the petting zoo, the train ride, and the barbecue festival itself. Ages six to 12 are $5 a day, and kids five and under are free. On Friday, our gates will open at 5:00 PM, and the entertainment on the State Farm Music Stage, beginning at 5:30, is Adam Walden. He's a local gentleman here, Goodyear worker, that was the finalist in the WQSB Talent Contest that they had here a couple months ago. And then at 7:30, our headline that night is The Fiddleheads. Now, The Fiddleheads are a group out of Atlanta, and they were semifinalists on the NBC show America's Got Talent. There's five guys, they play all kind of instruments except for a fiddle. So I'm not sure where the name came from, but anyway, I've seen a little bit of them, and they're very exciting and very enjoyable. On Saturday, this is something new that we've added this year. At 8:00 in the morning for runners and 5K, we're doing a Smoke Your Buns 5K Run sponsored by Jack's. And it's going to be a trail run. And actually, you're going to run some of the Black Creek Trail, some of the campground, and some of Noculula Park itself, as well as going through where the barbecuers are set up cooking that morning, and then finishing back over behind the Wedding Chapel. When we did this, our goal was to have 100 runners, and just to try to educate the people. Because with your admission to the 5K Run, which was $25 up until last Friday, you got a pass for the barbecue for both days as well. And now, if you register for the 5K Run, which you still can, and we're still getting entries in, it's $30, and you still get the pass into the barbecue as well. But our goal was to have 100 runners, and as, before I came in the meeting today, we already have 130, and we're figuring we're going to end up with 175 to 200, because a lot of folks will register the morning of the race. So you can register up until 7:45 over behind the Wedding Chapel Saturday morning, and the race will start right there. At 10:00, we will give the, on the State Farm Stage, on the park side, we will do the award ceremony for the 5K Run. So at that time, all the runners that won in their age divisions will be recognized that morning on the State Farm Stage before our gates open at 10:00 for the barbecue competition. The entertainment on Saturday on the State Farm Stage begins at 11:30, and the band that'll be playing then is Pioneer Chicken Stand. And Pioneer Chicken Stand, I think, is up from around the Sand Mountain area, and they actually, there's about eight or nine in the band, and I've seen them once in person, and they dress in suits, some of them vests, bow ties, crazy hats, and sing kind of today's music, but it's kind of a different flair to it, a little bit of Cajun bluegrass type. And they will have a rubber chicken on stage with them, so just in case you're wondering. But at, when they finish up at 2:00, Black Creek Revival will be performing, and they will perform to 4:00, they're a local group here in town. And then at 4:00, we will have the awards ceremony for the barbecue competition. Also on Saturday, for the kids, we will have the Barbecue Fun Zone, which is sponsored by Johnson's Giant Foods, and that will be set up in the grass area there inside the barbecue with inflatables for kids of all ages. We've got several different ones for different age groups. So that, we've got the most inflatables that we've ever had set up for the kids, just to give them something else to do on Saturday. Want to make one thing real clear, bring your lounge chairs and your coolers to the event. You'll need something to sit on, unless you want to sit on the ground, and you're welcome to bring your coolers in with whatever beverage you want. You just can't have any open containers coming into the park or leaving the park. Parking for the event is free. You can't park at the front where the barbecue competitors are, so let me tell you a little bit where you need to park. You can park at the practice fields that are located on the old landfill, and we'll shuttle you to the gate and back to your vehicles when you're ready to leave that evening. This is our fourth year to have the barbecue competition, and we're at our capacity right now. We've had to turn teams away, so we're already looking next year into moving the competition over into the campground area where we can hold more competitors, and so that's a good thing. We didn't think we would get to capacity in four years. We thought it would take us between five and 10 for the area that we were using. And I just want to personally thank the council and the mayor for allowing us to hold this festival, as well as I want to thank the Etowah County Tourism, the YAMCA, the Chamber for being partners with us in this event, and want to thank Public Works for their assistance for helping us get a lot of the things that we have to have set up this week. If you ride by there, you'll see something going on all week, just getting ready for this event. And most of all, I want to thank our Parks and Recreation staff. They've done a tremendous job, and you and I have one of the best park and recreation staffs in the whole entire state. Sometimes you don't realize that, but I'm just telling you. I know a good bit about what's going on statewide, and we've got a very good staff here that is eager to help and to do what we ask them to do to pull off an event like this. And I just want to thank you and hope to see y'all out this weekend. Thanks.
All right. Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
Yeah. I'd just like to say, you know, a few years back, you heard there was nothing to do in Gadsden. There's something every week somewhere for all ages, fun for the family, outdoor events, also the Pioneer Festival is here in town. I think they have, I better not say the number, we've got several artists from all over different parts of the state and United States, and you'll see them out painting all week on the sidewalks, scenic spots, historical buildings, and then I think towards the end of the week, you can check with the art museum, but they'll be having a sale on all of those and probably some kind of party, I would imagine. So, but there's always a lot of things to do, you just need to keep up with what's going on. Our tourism and Parks and Rec bunch do a really, really great job, and also Public Works who helps coordinate a lot of these events, the road closings and things like that. So I just want to tell you how much we appreciate them.
Really?
Thank you. DM. I also say the Pioneer event is also going, well, is going on, and there are artists from pretty much a lot of places. I had the opportunity yesterday to go downtown, and I met with three of the artists who were painting, you know, at the time. And it's interesting, you know, to talk to the artists, you know, because they give you some of the background from their homes and from what, and from their hometowns and how they were congratulating. And I just, I was really, really, really pleased that one of the artists that was down here at the Open Air Theater, down Amphitheater, and she said to me that she's been a lot of places. She said, but Gadsden, Alabama is one of the friendliest places she's ever been in her life. So I was very impressed with that. And all of the other artists, the other two that I did go to visit, thought a lot of our fair cities. So when you see these artists, you know, standing on the sidewalk or whatever, painting, go ahead and say hello to them and show, extend that courtesy that we're known for here in Gadsden. They're doing a good job. Also, if you get one of the cards, you know, if you get one of the cards from each one of the artists, they're going, they are going to give, and you turn them in on Friday, they're going to give away some paintings and some other artifact, you know, from the museum. So participating in that is a good thing. Ben Reed is a, has been appointed to the EMA Board of Directors, so I'm challenging Ben to continue our process of working with the EMA to find safe places for our residents when we have tornadic weather forecast for us.
I hope you really meant that, because the next storm that comes along, I'm going to hold you accountable to it.
We are, we remember we said-
But I appreciate you voting for me, I really do.
Absolutely. Remember, we said last year we were not going to give up on it? We're going to continue this thing until we establish something. I don't know what we can do, but we, the people of Gadsden and surrounding cities need to know that we are concerned when there's terrible weather coming our way, and we're concerned about our citizens, and we do, we would like to have places that they can go. But it's not as easy as us just sitting up here delegating or dedicating a place to tell you to go to. It's not that easy. But we're working on it.
Billy, I agree with you. I think it's worthy that you keep it up, seriously.
Yes. And that's why I say it, because I know, you know, you agree with me on that. The other thing that I have is, we're going to have our District 1 Community Meeting on Monday, April 16th, at 6:00 at East Gadsden Community Center, and I'll invite all of our residents in East Gadsden and as well as the city to come out and join us. We're going to have, Chief Crane is going to be there to entertain any conversation or any questions that the citizens may have, and he'll also impart some knowledge to you about what the police department would like to see us do. And we'll ask him, you know, we'll impart the knowledge of your questions on what you would like to see from the police department. So it's a two-way street, it's a working thing. And CED Mental Health, Dana Williams will be there also doing a survey, so I'll encourage you to come out and be with us at 6:00 next Monday at East Gadsden Community Center. Thank you.
Ben?
Didn't know I was going to be on so soon. I sat here, my mind was wandering.
He wants you to go ahead and continue what I said.
I'm not going to continue that. My mind was wandering back up when Kerry was talking about the guys dressed in all those suits and those hats, and that old rubber chicken on the stage reminded me when I got initiated in the quarterback club. That was a rough night, rough night. Alabama City Historical Association will meet tonight at 6:00 at the Old Fire Hall in Alabama City. So any and everybody who's interested in Alabama City history and preserving that history, welcome to attend. Mayor, good season.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. I was notified today that the Half Acres Neighborhood Watch Group will be meeting this week in North Gadsden at Thompson Community Center. Chief, what was the date and time again?
5:00 on Thursday.
Okay, so it'd be 5:00 PM on Thursday, which will be Thursday, the, help me out, the 13th, the 12th? 13th, 12th? Okay. Friday, I'm sorry, Thursday the 12th at 5:00 PM at Thompson. Chief Crane will be there, and so those of you who are interested, they are in the process of developing the Neighborhood Watch Group. So those of you who are interested in watching that process evolve and who want more information about that process, please feel free to attend. It's a very interesting group of folks and very dedicated group of folks that have shown up for a couple meetings thus far to get that started, so I'm really excited about what they're doing there. I do want to thank, take this opportunity to thank again our Commercial Development Authority and what they've done to drive the commercial development of the area. We're excited to have Rare Hospitality International here, and we're excited about what you're doing now and what you will do in the near future. So we appreciate that. And again, one of these days, we're going to list the accomplishments of that authority. I think there's some very notable achievements that we ought to take the opportunity to list at some point. And I'm a little biased, I've been on that board for, I've been on that board for the last three years, I believe, so I'm a little bit biased there, but I think they do a lot of great work and are very notable when compared to similar organizations across the state. Again, First Friday was a success. I actually attended on last Friday. Wonderful turnout, a lot of nine Gadsden faces there, which kind of speaks to the level of the event and how people have heard, have the words traveling that we're having our First Friday event. So want to commend the DGI group for what they do in regard, in regards to that event. And we ask that we will continue to talk up our local events. And also, Smoke on the Falls, I do want to commend Parks and Rec for all of their work there, and ask that everyone go out and support that. I'll definitely try to be there this week, this week myself. And the last thing, I'd be remiss if I did not mention this. I, the Gadsden City High School Cheerleaders had their competition or their tryouts on last week, and I had two in my house that were actually trying out. So there was always that risk and that fear that we might have one to make it and one not, or neither one of them making it. But I am glad to say that we had both of them to make the cheerleading squad, so I'm excited about that. And so I've got two cheerleaders, one who's run the course, she's made it every year that she's been there, and she'll be a senior next year, and I've got a little one that's just getting started. So I'm taking donations wherever they come from, and please pray for me.
Derek, I've been in your shoes before. I've had a daughter that was a cheerleader there when the school first opened up, and I will pray for you because you won't heed our prayers. I just want to announce that the Fourth Annual Gadsden, Sea of Gadsden Cleanup Day will be Saturday, April 28th, 2012, 8:00 AM to noon. To volunteer your group, contact the Saver Neighborhood Project Coordinator at 256-549-4794. We will provide all the trash bags for the cleanup. We will meet here at the City Hall Park Lot at 8:00, and let's just make this another great turnout to help get our city back clean. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items. Like, the chief is going to be real busy. He's going to be at my district meeting next week also, along with the people from Etowah County, MATT Association, the whole nine yards. You hear more about that next week. I see a young lady in the audience who contacted me, and I thought she was going to be upstairs, but she didn't. But chief, we've had some break-ins and stuff, and in this particular case, and it's not an isolated case, but it has happened. A lot of times, police officers respond, and they didn't do anything. Nothing. I mean, zilch. They just went in and said, yeah, you had a break-in, and give us a list of what's missing. But then they go to other places, and they take evidence. I'm familiar with the situation where they got DNA off of a bottle of water at a particular break-in. And I don't want to get into all of that, but my question is, and her question, was why is it that they treat certain areas, certain people, certain places different? If you got a break-in and you got police officers coming to investigate, you would think that they would try to take fingerprints or whatever evidence they can to try to catch them. But it seems as though, this particular, and hopefully the lady will get with you when this meeting is over with, so she can, and go over that with you. I just have a problem with the difference, the way people are treated. You know, if you're going to go to somebody's house and they had a break-in, and you're just going to get a report as to what's missing, and you do that at everybody's house, I don't have a complaint. But when you come to my house, because I'm on the council, you go in and try to do fingerprints, but you go to John Q. Citizen's house, and you just get a list, then I got a problem with that. I got a serious problem with that, because everybody should be treated the same. So get off the soap on that, but hopefully the lady will get with you as soon as this is over with. I see one of our former mayors from a city from way up north somewhere here who's moved back home. You know, we got a lot of folks who go off to other places and come back, but they'd be mayors and council members and probably senators and the whole nine yards, every place else. And then when they come back home, they don't do anything. Ms. Goggins, who used to be the mayor of East Cleveland, oh, we looking around that lady. We need to get you involved in our city since you know about city involvement and city government, and we're just happy to have you back home with us, and I was intending to recognize you the last time, I didn't. But Ms. Goggins used to be the mayor of East Cleveland in Ohio, that's that big city up there, yeah. So we're just happy to have you back here. Good seeing you, buddy. That's all I have.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So move.
Please adjourn.